All right, welcome and good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 7th, and we will begin the meeting. With the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, we ask that folks are are willing and able to stand, and we will welcome Pastor Pam Mason of the St. Paul African American Methodist Episcopal Church, who will be joining us virtually. Morning Pastor Pam.
Good morning, let us pray. Today, oh God, we are blessed to see another day, and thankful that you have allowed us this opportunity to make sound decisions, the opportunity to build, to restore, and to expand our city, the time to continue to embrace change and the differences in others. Lord God, Mayor Brandon Whipple, and each councilperson, as they make every effort to govern in solidarity and respect the voices they hear, may they continuously exemplify effective leadership principles and strive for ethical strategic balancing as we face the effects of COVID-19 all around us. We are living in challenging times, Lord, we need your help. May we seize the opportunities presented with the common goal of making Wichita a better community, a better city, a better place. Bless and protect our leadership and their families, every city employee, their families, businesses and nonprofit entities, our schools, medical professionals, our children, our young people and young adults. Bless and protect each and every person that woke up this morning in Wichita. It is a brand-new day. Lord, help us to focus. We give thanks, in Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again Pastor Pam. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 24th, 2021.
As every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion on the minutes? If there is no discussion on the minutes, now make a motion to approve the minutes as they were presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk open and roll, members cast the vote. Having received seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation, Library Card Sign-Up Month.
But ask the folks who are here to receive the proclamation for the Library Card Sign-Up Month to make their way to the front. Proclamation of the City of Wichita founded in 1870. Whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all, whereas libraries and librarians play a critical role in the education and development of children, whereas libraries offer a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning, whereas library resources serve students of all ages, from early literacy to STEM programs to research databases, whereas sign up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, whereas a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Library Card Sign-Up Month. And the City of Wichita encourage all citizens to visit their local branch of the Wichita Public Library, sign up for a library card, and discover the available resources and services.
Thank you Mayor Whipple. Everyday staff at the Wichita Public Library works to provide equitable access to information for our customers. This is especially important for our youngest customers. Registering for a library card is a free service that unlocks endless possibilities for children and teens. At the Wichita Public Library, we provide technology services, access to research databases, homework help, ACT and SAT practice tests, and more. A library card gives students the tools to succeed in the classroom and provides people of all ages the ability to pursue their dreams and passions. Since 1987, the American Library Association has worked with libraries across the country to ensure every child signs up for their own library card, and we are proud to serve as a partner in this effort. Thank you Mayor Whipple and City Council for recognizing the importance of libraries in our city and for helping us ensure these services are available to all of our residents.
Madam Clerk.
Public Agenda, Sybil Strum, COVID Vaccines, and Wichita Pride Festival.
All right, we're now going into the public agenda portion. Please be mindful of the timer. Every member will have about, who sign up to speak will have five minutes, and the timer will be in front of you so that you know how much time you have left. Welcome Sybil.
Hello. I would like to say that I do not want to take the COVID vaccine. I think it is the individual's deal to take it or not take it. I just feel that the COVID vaccine has had defects, like for example, you gotta get another booster shot. It should be the individual's feeling to take it or not take it. I do wear a mask in public, I do clean my hands, and I just express, don't let the vaccine take over. I was watching the news and they had a woman that was from a nursing home had to fire her people because of this COVID vaccine. And it's gonna hurt the economy. So that's what I think of that. Now the Wichita Pride Festival, you shouldn't have it. You let them take over. They had so many people at their march, and some didn't even wear a mask. And I just think the people that are military, National Guard, active duty, and veterans should get the credit. You did not give them a parade. They went and fought for our country. Some didn't come back, some did. So that's how I feel about it. I mean, I expressed it to one of your receptionists. I said that they didn't receive it. They shouldn't have received it at all, because now you've got these guidelines that we have to wear masks everywhere we go. And you now you're gonna have the River Festival in October. And I'm all for the mask policy, but don't make me take that coronavirus vaccine or the Delta virus vaccine, that's all I gotta say, thank you, oh wait. I am so glad to know that you are expressing that I could talk, but I know so many people don't want me to talk, but I will talk, because I know what I'm saying, I just don't know how to speak it. Thank you, goodbye.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks Mayor. Just for those watching, because the vaccine was mentioned, just wanna highlight, all vaccines have some particular risk, and that shouldn't worry you on that, this vaccine is safe. And the third booster shot is for those who are moderately to severely immunocompromised. I'm reading that from the CDC website. So those who heard that who might be worried, please do some additional research and check out information on the vaccine, talk to your doctor or medical provider about that. Thanks Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Noah Blanco, Nondiscrimination Ordinance.
Good morning, welcome.
I'm just gonna come in to check in on where we're at with the Nondiscrimination Ordinance. The W. Young Professionals has been hosting meetings, which you all have attended except for Blue Ball. We missed you last week, I wish you could have been there, where you all have kind of told us a little bit more about where you're heading. And I think that's great, I'm very pleased to hear from, specifically I got to speak with Cerulo and Claycombe last week, and to see where they're at. My one concern that I did bring up in general with it is that this whole thing was put on hold by Councilwoman Tuttle, and it was motioned by everybody else to follow that up, in order to make the NDO better. What I'm not seeing is that. What I'm seeing is that the definition of making the NDO better has very much become, how can we make sure to appease the most radical voices against it and not get sued? Which I guess that's better, saves the city money. But I don't know if it's if it's being orchestrated with the intention of truly making it better. When I hear better, when I say, somebody tells me, do something better, I go and I examine, how can I actually make it better for everyone? Not how can I just do this one specific narrow thing because one voice is dominating the argument and turning it into purely a gay rights issue? When this is something that can help literally everybody in other cities, in other municipalities, it's being used to help enforce ADA laws, it's being used to broaden the base of vouchers that housing has to accept to include more options, and that includes the VASH vouchers for the military and the Section 8 vouchers for individual people. Not that I think that that's necessary, I think that's totally a separate issue that I'm gonna be up here talking about in the future, is the housing issue here in Wichita. They're also using it to protect families. So municipalities such as Phoenix, which is gonna be a little more politically where we're at, in my opinion, is using it to protect parents, essentially. So parents who take family leave or wanna take time off to be with their kid after birth, ensuring that those people can do that without being hurt by it. Unfortunately, as I've kind of mentioned, and not, also Fair Chance Housing, which helps protect people with felonies, which we're not terrible in incarceration rate. We're like right in the middle of the pack at 24 out of 50 in highest amount of people incarcerated. But it's still something that, you know, we need to think about is how are we gonna treat everybody fairly? And how are we gonna use this to improve economic standings for multiple people? To change the rhetoric, and that's honestly my main point today, is that that rhetoric change does not happen just through grassroots movements. We've seen here today, and I already, people say things that you have to wonder what the intent behind, what the statement was that they said and who they were directing it at. And when a council, I'm sorry, this has been a run-on sentence, and when a council frames something with the rhetoric of improving, but then does only look to protect this one specific thing, that brings into question that maybe we desperately need this just so that we can start changing the language and changing the rhetoric of the way we frame discrimination and the way we frame how we think about each other, so that we no longer are allowing hate speech that has negative and violent implications to go on and be treated as if that's just an opinion that's protected by your First Amendment right to free speech, whereas you cannot go to an airport and scream bomb and be protected by free speech. I don't think that, I think there's definitely legal grounds that inciting violence towards people because you have a belief that tells you, even though it's a false belief, we all had to sit here and listen to 10 hours of people say things along the lines of these transgender people are going to influence my child and make them all transgender. Obviously, these are issues that we need to talk about, and I would like to inquire, urge, just put that out there to please be considering that with this KCL thing, because that was kind of a shock for me too, that it got kicked to another department after the Inclusion Board got thrown under the bus for it. But let's like, I would just like some feedback basically about, what are your all individual ideas, where are we improving this? And how are we making sure that it maintains potency? Also, on the funding issue, I know Tuttle brought that up at her meeting. That is something that a lot of people are concerned about because that is a class issue. Most people don't pursue actions against employers because they don't wanna suffer economic or personal repercussions of that word getting around and then you're un-hirable, or that draining you financially. So how are we gonna work on that funding issue? Because other municipalities do do the funding through the city, and it's a service that's provided. So I apologize for going over, thank you guys for your time.
Madam Clerk.
Tremaine Longer, Theme Park in Kansas.
Doesn't seem like that person president. Therefore, we'll go to the next item. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 17.
I will ask that item number 17 be pulled from Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion on Consent Agenda? There's no discussion on Consent Agenda, then I will make the motion to pass the Consent Agenda as presented, with the exception of item 17.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk open and roll, members cast the vote. Having received seven yays, that motion does pass. Onto item 17. The Chair will ask the manager to, or actually staff, if Director Sang would like to discuss why it was pulled and what we're doing for those who are watching.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sally Sang from the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. The Housing, the PHA Housing Board has a requirement to have a resident commissioner serve on the board with equal vote and equal voice. This requirement has been stayed through the COVID-19 pandemic following the resignation of Mr. Marlowe, who was our previous resident commissioner for the PHA Board. So we started that process up again in early 2021 to seek out a resident commissioner to serve as the resident representative on the board. And we have here today Toni Lewis, who has, is enthusiastic about joining the board and serving back to the program. And I'd like to give her just a moment to introduce herself to you.
Ma'am, my name is Toni Lewis. I'm very honored to be here, to stand in front of you all. What you all have been doing for the Housing Authority and the residents and the community is awesome, and the programs that were brought to my attention are very exciting, and I think it's gonna make for a bright future for the Housing Department.
We thank you for being here and we thank you for your service.
Thank you Toni very much. So this is her first meeting, it happened to be a consent item, so it's a little bit different than most, but she is here to be able to vote on the consent item, which is the grant application for the three family self-sufficiency coordinators. This is a routine grant we apply for each year.
Excellent, well, we will open up discussion if there is any on item 17, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program and Grant Application. Any discussion from the public? Is there a discussion from the bench, or from Toni, the newest member? If there is no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to authorize the application in the amount of $310,254 to cover three family self-sufficiency program coordinator positions, approve the grant award upon receipt, and execute the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk open and roll, members cast their vote. We're to ask that Toni, if asked her vote as well.
Yay.
Very good, having received eight yay votes, that motion does pass unanimously. Thank you, thank you Toni. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Morning, sir, and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Councilmember Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The petitions for your consideration today include signatures representing 100% of the Improvement District for each, and all are valid per Kansas statute. The first development is Biltmore State's addition west of 135th Street West and north of Pawnee in District 4. The project includes four phases of water improvements, have multiple phases for drainage, four phases for sanitary sewer, and the same for paving. The second addition is Marinita, third addition north of Douglas East of Greenwood Road, which is in District 2. Similarly, this includes new petitions for water improvements, paving and paving improvements. Staff recommend City Council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the mending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Is any input from the public? Bring discussion back to the bench, is there discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk open and roll, members cast their vote. Having received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Creating Sustainability Integration Board.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Penny Feis, Public Works and Utilities, returning today to discuss formation of the Sustainability Integration Board. By brief background, we're here today because the city has continued to expand environmental and sustainability efforts within the past several years. And that includes participation with the Carbon Disclosure Project, CDP. We're also included in a benchmarking survey through the American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy. We have completed an internal organization-wide survey of sustainability efforts and initiatives. And most recently, earlier this year, we began a partnership with Wichita State's Environmental Finance Center to help us develop a path forward for these initiatives and develop a scoring matrix that will assist in prioritization. Through that time, it became the recommendation that a board be developed to help evaluate, prioritize, and implement those initiatives. A draft ordinance was presented on August 17th, and since that time, community feedback has been received, and that feedback has resulted in several revisions to the ordinance. This table doesn't represent all of the revisions made. Many of them were word improvements, but this section does represent the most significant changes. In the Purpose section of the ordinance, we expanded that and included the information there. We heard that the purpose statement should be much more powerful, so we sought to expand that. We added the affordability and resiliency of all services, and we also included economic opportunities and climate change resiliency. In the Duties section of the ordinance, it was expanded, the outreach opportunities were expanded to include schools in addition to residents and businesses, membership. Previously, there were 12 areas of expertise that City Council could appoint members of the community based on the expertise, and that has been expanded to 13 to include education. And for meetings and officers, previously, the board was to meet at least quarterly if desired. And then the manager could call meetings more often, but this revision allows the board to call meetings more often than quarterly, so if they so choose, they can meet monthly, as long as they provide proper public notice. Staff continues to recommend the integration within the board, which means it would be a 14-member board, and it has the same qualifications as the regular standard requirements of all city boards. Seven of those members would be appointed by City Council, representing at least one of the following areas of expertise. You can see those, that now includes education. And then seven of the boards would be appointed from and by existing boards and commissions, and this is what really the substance of the integration is. Some of the benefits of integration include collaboration, coordination, and communication. And because sustainability is a very broad topic, it includes multi-disciplinary groups from all across the city, we felt integration would make this board very effective. And so it allows the board to leverage existing structures and resources and processes. It distributes responsibility throughout the organization, which adds capacity and efficiency. And if it was a standalone initiative, it would run the risk of a narrowed focus, duplication, or direct conflict with existing efforts. In my mind, the integration makes it very effective very quickly. This is the same timeline presented previously, provided by the Environmental Finance Center. They are continuing to develop the list of projects and efforts that we could undertake within the next few years. If we move forward, the Sustainability Integration Board would be able to participate in many of these important next steps. Staff would like to continue to work with the Environmental Finance Center, review the list, the scoring matrix that they're developing. We like to move forward and see the board through the standard application process that the city has, and then begin drafting environmental adaptation and mitigation plans. The recommended action is to place the ordinance on first reading and approve necessary signatures. Be happy to stand for questions.
All right, is there questions of staff? See none, thank you. We'll open up for input from the public. We just ask people to kind of make a bit of a line and just be courteous. We don't have like an official sign-up sheet or anything, so. Ma'am, welcome, we're glad you're here and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Carson. I am a semi-retired attorney who has practiced in the areas of bankruptcy and mortgage foreclosure here in Wichita for 20 years plus. Brandon Johnson is my council member. I am affiliated with SOAR, the Society of Alternative Resources, a group organized to address local environmental issues here in Wichita. We were beyond pleased to see the city ordinance for a Wichita Sustainability Board. I believe the city can accomplish much-needed steps for increased livability and well-being for all its citizens by looking at issues through the lens of sustainability. Accordingly, I couldn't be happier to see this ordinance come before the council. Economic development is important to Wichita, but with the addition of this Sustainability Board, Wichita moves to sustainable development focused on environmental care as well as economic progress. One thing I have loved about living in Wichita is the city's park system. No matter where I lived, I am not far from a city park. I thrive with the trees and the grass and the ducks and geese and egrets that populate our local lakes. As the natural environment blooms and thrives, I thrive also. The skies are my lungs, the stars my canopy, and we must give that natural environment its due. its due. I love the great river that flows through the heart of the city, excuse me, and shapes its future as well as buried its past. We are surrounded by natural treasures that demand our attention and care. With the Sustainability Board, I hope to see Wichita engage its citizens in shaping a future for the city that generates sustainable growth, that protects and treasures our natural environment, and makes this city one that I'm proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning, and welcome.
Tabitha Lehman. My address is thirty-two fifty-four South Custer, and I'll say good morning to my councilman, Luba. And before I start speaking, I would just like to, as a private citizen now, thank each of you for your sacrifice as you run for office and serve in these roles that I know are not easy and oftentimes thankless, and you get a lot of pressure and push and pull from the public, and I know how stressful that is, and I just want to say thank you to each of you. Whether I agree with you politically or not, doesn't matter. I appreciate you. Now, my official role here is today is the advocacy chair for the Wichita Metro League of Women Voters, and I am here to speak on behalf of the League of Women Voters and just tell you that we appreciate you considering this Sustainability Board, that we fully support the board, and we are happy to see this coming up. This is on our list of things that are a priority for us this year, and so we just want to thank you for doing this, and just let you know that the League supports this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, and welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Kent Rowe. I live at three-three-five-three North One Fifty-Ninth East, Wichita. And I'm here on behalf of the Campus Greens, Faculty Green Group, Sierra Club, Society of Alternative Resources, Moms Clean Air Force, and I am here to endorse the ordinance Most definitions of sustainability include a three-tier tripartite consisting of environment, economy, and society. Governmental policy following sustainable best practices will ideally encompass all three simultaneously with inclusion for all. Presently, twenty-five hundred local and regional authorities across the USA have created sustainability advisory boards. The International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives has since 2010 helped with design tools for emissions management, adaptation planning, greenhouse gas contribution analysis, and tree and forest grassland emissions. Five pathways approach balances of human, built, and natural environments to accomplish low-carbon emissions, resiliency, equitable, and people-centered goals, nature-based, and a circular economy. Protocols supporting local initiatives are at hand. It is good government. It is good democracy. Please vote yes on ordinance fifty-one-six-two-five. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing well. Thank you for asking.
I'm Jennifer Connolly, and I live at thirty-three fifty-three North One Fifty-Ninth East, Wichita, Kansas. And I applaud all of my environmental friends. That's really why I'm here to tell you how they work so hard to talk to all you city council members. I haven't always been here for them, and I just want to say how they work hard. And Lori Lawrence, I know you all know her, and Bruce Blank, they're not able to be here. We have many members that have to work, or they're in quarantine. So that's the biggest reason I came, and I wanted to talk also about all the people that work behind the scenes that I don't see every day. And those people are the people in these groups that you just heard about. And we have some very, very intelligent people in our workforce, and I would like to see that expanded, and I would like to see the city support those people. So we've got a lot of different things coming on. We have managers that we're going to need. We're talking in particular about buildings. We'll need technical engineers, building operators, construction people, people that work with improving our buildings. We use thirty-five percent of our electricity with commercial buildings alone. We use twenty-seven percent for industrial and thirty-seven percent for residential. Imagine the opportunities that we can address and the money that can be saved for our city by moving this kind of program forward. We now, in this country, thirty percent of our is wasted in our commercial buildings. Just think, if we had the people to work and the talent, what we could save for the city just in the money alone and for our environment, which is so very, very important to all of us. So that's really all I have to say, and I appreciate all of you for being here, and I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning. Welcome.
I'm Carla Jackson-Patten, and up until two months ago, I lived in nineteen-nineteen North Spruce on that home for thirty years. Born and raised in District One, particularly six-seven-two-one-four. I'm a founder of the Black and Green Renaissance, and my passion is sustainability. Seeking to see Wichita create a net-zero community, particularly in the opportunity zone. What's your opportunity zone? Which one is it?
There are three opportunity zones.
The one that's in the Dunbar area.
Yeah, there's three opportunity zones in District One. That's one of them.
Okay. That's the one I'm speaking of, and I've been doing research. And in other opportunity zones in other cities and states, there's been sustainable building in those opportunity zones, particularly with solar power and energy. So that is my passion, but also the environmental impact of people in District One, six-seven-two-one-four zip code. So I'm happy to see the council even consider this. And I'm in your, I live in your district now, and Lori Lawrence and I came to see you a couple of years ago. And I know that you're about environmental sustainability. So I'm just asking you to vote yes on this proposal.
Next speaker, please. Welcome back, sir.
Good morning, Mayor Whipple, city council members, and city staff. I am Michael McCorkle. I currently reside in District Five. Wichita is my hometown. Thank you for allowing public input to this revised ordinance. Words matter, and more revision needs to be considered. This issue is too important for our children and grandchildren not to get it right at the beginning. The city of Wichita is moving the right direction, although with poor transparency and a managerial reluctance to acknowledge the seriousness of global climate change and its likely impact on our local economy and way of life. Please read the latest United Nations Intergovernmental Report on Climate Change. It is horrifying how it depicts the future. Seven months ago, when we resolved to help persuade the city council to take action on climate change, we decided to push for what our local government should do, not what you were willing to do. The city's ninety-ninth ranking among the one hundred largest U.S. cities reflects past thinking, and all Wichitaans deserve better. While the revised ordinance is a positive step in the right direction, the membership and meeting sections contradict the intent and purpose of this essential ordinance and do not serve those most vulnerable citizens it should protect. The revised ordinance includes climate resiliency planning, which is commendable. And when you look around the U.S. at other cities impacted by extreme weather made worse by climate change, the need for climate resiliency planning for our community should indeed be an urgent priority. Since last month, the western part of our country continues to burn, and the eastern half has been devastated by Hurricane Ida. Wichita has been very lucky that nothing similar has happened here because almost nothing has been done to prepare for imminent climate change. Research has shown that minority and marginalized communities are most affected by extreme weather and climate change, and certainly all Wichitaans need local resiliency plans sooner, not years later, if ever. The Wichita Sustainability Integration Board Meeting Plan should be monthly, not quarterly, not optional, because of the urgency for Wichita to put in place actual plans to protect its citizens and prosperity. The membership plan should be streamlined, to be responsive, inclusive of Wichita's diversity, and able to achieve consensus quickly, not an unwieldy, even-numbered membership with half already involved with other city boards. Integration is an important issue, and by the nature of climate change, all boards and all committees of any kind would be consulted and shared data with. Eleven is the universally accepted board size because it represents the ideal balance between the need for representation and the inefficiencies of large groups. Almost all Wichita board memberships consist of eleven or fewer members. Most boards in most cities have eleven board members or less. We were told last month by the city manager that the EFC has looked at several models and recommended this model with this membership plan. Based on what? The proposed membership and meeting plans are designed to delay action, not to protect Wichita's citizens and economy. This membership plan reminds me of another EFC role, advising and overseeing the city's long-awaited litter study, which was designed not to find much litter and delayed for over two years with no final report to date. Imagine how long the EFC could delay action on something as controversial as climate change. The EFC would have you believe that only they know how to set up a Sustainability Board. Many other U.S. cities have taken this first step. Kansas City and Lawrence are good models. We do not need to reinvent the wheel, and you should not trust that the EFC has the best interests of Wichita's citizens as their first consideration. The advisorial relationship of the EFC to the city of Wichita should be reviewed. I urge this elected body to delay this vote until the membership and meeting sections can be fully reviewed and revised in a transparent manner to represent the best interests of all Wichita's citizens. The future is too important to not get this right for all Wichitaans and future generations. Thanks for the opportunity to address this council on this critical issue.
Next speaker, please. Good morning.
My name is Jane Burns. I'm in District One. Thank you for this revised ordinance to establish a Sustainability Board for the city of Wichita. I am so glad and so grateful that this version accepted some of our citizen suggestions on the purpose and the duties of this future board. As climate change is creating extreme fires, storms, droughts, and floods, Wichita still has a good chance of addressing the climate emergency with clarity and vigor in a strong Wichita way. I do have two concerns with this current Sustainability Ordinance. One is membership. Fourteen members is a large board size, and it is an even number, which complicates any group's voting. Other Wichita boards are eleven folks or smaller. And also, because seven of the proposed fourteen membership slots would require doubling up time from existing boards, I assume you'll get mostly retirees or upper-income folks to apply. More representative, younger people, students and other adults with children and jobs, do not have sufficient discretionary time to dedicate to two important city boards. How about picking four of those seven boards listed currently? And by the way, who does the picking? City staff or electees? My second concern is the Environmental Finance Center, which seems to have such great priority. With the Single-Use Plastic Bag Task Force, it has been excruciatingly slow while Wichita waits and waits and waits. With the Single-Use Plastic Bag Task Force, the EFC data appears careful but barely relevant. Their very good litter study has little relevance with the serious decay and quantities of single-use plastic bags in Wichita waterways. Wichita waits on the EFC even as it insists on oddities, such as a board with fourteen members and requiring seven of those members to serve on two boards, which pretty much excludes younger, busier, and less privileged folks. Yes, I'd like our Wichita ordinance to be a bit stronger. Nevertheless, having seen all this and said all this, I ask that you all finish establishing a future-looking, meaningful, vigorous Sustainability Board by voting for this ordinance. Once the ordinance is in place, please. Public Works, please move forward efficiently and swiftly to form the board, ensuring a representative variety of bright, informed, motivated Wichitaans so it can begin its work this very year. Wichita can be hopeful and even trendy for all of us, but most especially for our youngest people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, and welcome. My name is Reverend Tom Scott. I live at sixty-five thirty-five North Thirtieth Street here in Wichita. I've lived here seven years. I came because I married the first speaker. We're kind of the first and the last, I guess. In my job as a minister, in my profession, I traveled a lot around the country and in the world, as far as living, because we never took vacations, we always moved. So as a result, I've lived in five or six states, a variety of ones, many of which were very well organized in the environment, some were terrible. I've lived overseas. When I was a kid, I grew up in Ohio where I can remember going to a fishing creek, and they said, oh, this is great, and we'd get the fish out. That particular area was called Kaoga River, and you may remember back when I was a kid, it turned into a raging flame for a number of years. They couldn't clean it up because they let it go so long. I remember overseas in New Zealand where they did clean things up, and it was a beautiful country, and I think most people today would love to be in that kind of setting. We have an opportunity now to make Wichita proud and maybe become leaders of the country if we wanted to be, but we've got to start. Every time we delay, I have been on many boards, you delay it, and the next thing you know, it's tomorrow, tomorrow, then somebody else says, oh, I think we should be doing this, and the end result is nothing is done. A lot of talk, volumes of minutes, but nothing's done. It would be easy to say you could just simply put fourteen people in a room and they would fulfill their obligation. But we all have other obligations. But please, remember, if you don't start it, it won't get done. But please, remember, if you don't start it, it won't get done. I think you have a lot of opportunity because there are very bright people in Wichita that I've found. The good or bad news is that everybody who has spoke, I know either real well or marginally, including one who we've lived about thirty miles apart in New Zealand many years ago. So we understand what is important to this world, and we also understand what's important to you because you have children, grandchildren, moms and dads and everyone else. And if you don't consider them when you make this... Now, I know about how slow things can be because we volunteered this summer to clean up some of the parks in the litter study. I'll be honest. It would have been nice to say it was a piece of cake, but after the Fourth of July at the park on Pawnee, it was terrible. There were so many thousands of little bits and pieces and fireworks that we had to spend hours just trying to pick up enough to fill your hand because it was scattered. So we could say, we here Wichitaans, we are very environmentally coordinated, and we pick up after ourselves. Of course, we don't. The good news was, there was not a lot of plastic bags, and there wasn't a lot of trash at the parks that we other had gone to because it was just maybe timing. But the timing was also critical. It was supposed to have been done in April. But the red tape, trying to get things put together, a plan was submitted, and then it was kicked out and said it had to be done again. Well, here we are right now at the same thing, only it's not a committee, it's you. You can keep kicking it back. I'm sure we could do a better job. I'm almost positive we could. But that makes that much more pollution and other problems with the sustainability of our poor environment. So I urge you to go ahead and vote on it. I know things can... I've been on boards that would never change, they would, if something comes along that they need to see. So please, consider that, and if you want to postpone it, great, but don't postpone it more than a few weeks because every minute, the country gets worse. Thank you for your time, and good luck.
Thank you. Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to give a shout-out. Thank you very much for going out there to the parks. I appreciate that, guys. Especially after we get the rains and stuff and you see all that trash out there. It's really appreciated you guys go do that. Thank you.
Further public input? There is none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Cirillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that I think we need to move forward on this today. But I do have some concerns. Are there... I do have some concerns that this board is too big. I have some concerns that it is an even number. An even number presents a potential for conflict and not coming to a resolution on whatever they're voting on. I do also agree that this board should meet monthly. If we're talking about creating this board that is very important to our community, I think they should meet more than four times a year. But there's nothing in this ordinance that allows this board, correct me if I'm wrong, to change their own rules. Is that correct?
Councilmember Cirillo, that's not correct. For instance, we put a minimum of meeting a quarter. They could meet monthly. They could meet every two weeks. They're allowed to do that. Most of our boards and commissions, when they are first formed, also come up with either a set of procedures or they come up with bylaws depending on what the body is. So they do have a lot of freedom, and that was one of the things we were concerned about, was tying the hands of this group too much. But we did think some good comments came forward regarding the purpose of the group, and so we've embellished on what was originally provided to you in that regard. I think it's a little better defined, but I don't think it necessarily ties the hands of it.
So this board will create its own bylaws. Is that correct?
Bylaws or procedures depends on how they approach it.
I think we need to move forward on this today. That's all I have.
Further comments? There is no further comment. I'll close by saying thank you to the community for coming out and for pressing this issue and ensuring that we saw it through with this. Really, a first step with a board. We will appreciate more feedback as we put this in place. I know that there is some uncertainty. There are some concerns with not only the membership amount, but also maybe with the amount of meetings or some of the goals set forward. So we will look towards those folks in the community to come forward with us if there are tweaks that we need to make to this or changes that we need to make so we can get the most effective product in the end. Now, I just want to also say that thank you to the staff for looking into this, particularly with looking at best practices, bringing professionals to the table, and listening to our community activists as well so that we can have a more balanced approach to this policy or this ordinance moving forward. I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to place the ordinance on first read and authorize the necessary signatures. I think this is a great first step forward, and I don't think that we should let the perfect be the enemy of the good. So with that, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk of Open Roll, members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2022 Proposed Budget Approval.
Thanks for the light clap, by the way, to get kind of in the middle of the decorum. But I understand you all are excited. You have a lot to be excited about for pushing this forward. Thank you. Mark, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the City Council. Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Two weeks ago, you adopted our budget and CIP and the use of Millevy funds for Wichita State University. As we talked about during the process this year, the state statutes changed considerably this year, which made our process a little bit more challenging than usual. We were in constant communication with the state of Kansas and with our partners across the street at Sedgwick County. But to avoid any potential confusion on the timing of our adoption this year, staff is recommending that as a technical adjustment that you adopt the budget and approve the ordinances exactly the same as you did on August 24th. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions about this? Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Mark. I just want to confirm, maybe this is for Jennifer, for the manager, but I did abstain from Item Six previously when we voted. Do I need to do anything with that today, or is it just an okay?
No.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Is there any discussion from the public? Seeing none, is there any more discussion from the bench? We got a member who just stepped to the side, so I'm... If that was funny, I would tell a joke as we wait, but I'm not. So here we go. I want to make sure we're courteous to all of our members. So with that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to adopt the 2022 proposed budget as originally approved on August 24, 2021, approve amending the 2021 Union Station TIF consistent with the original action on August 24, 2021, and approve the budget ordinances.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk of Open Roll. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Fire Apparatus Replacement.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember. Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. I'm here today to make three presentations to you. The very first one is on fire apparatus replacement. And what we're proposing today is... Our current program has an average of seven heavy apparatus to be replaced approximately every two years. Our count may vary based on the agent... Excuse me, and the condition of the fleet. We utilize the assessment condition evaluation that Public Works initially initiated several years ago. And our target replacement interval is every fourteen years. Currently, what we have for frontline apparatus, our heavy apparatus, we currently have twenty-one engines. We have eight engines that are in reserve for a total of twenty-nine fire engines. We currently have five frontline trucks. We have three trucks that are in reserve, so a total of eight actual trucks or aerials. And our special operations section, that's our heavy rescues, our technical rescues, those apparatus, we have nine. We have zero that are in reserve for a total of nine. And our support apparatus, which is our Mobile Air, our rehab vehicle in Tender One, we have three of those. We have one as a reserve, so a total of four. So you can see there in front of you the grand totals for each one of those. What we're asking for from the 2021 replacements are... Well, what we have currently coming to us for 2021 replacements is one truck, two engines, a tractor-trailer for urban search and rescue, and two Wawa apparatus. All these units are somewhere between 2002 and 2006 models, and they're all past the recommended replacement schedule. The project cost would be about $4.75 million financed through general obligations. So with that, the recommendation would be to approve the project, adopt the bonding issue, and authorize the necessary signatures. So I'll stand for questions in regards to fire apparatus.
Questions of staff. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Chief Snow. Appreciate the presentation. What happens with the equipment that is going out of service?
It goes to Purple Wave.
So it'd be auctioned off?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any opportunity to... I know that we have some of our firefighters down in Louisiana helping with Hurricane Ida. If there's any opportunity to maybe help some of those communities that could use a reserve or a piece of equipment, I would... Hopefully, we could at least check that out before we determine that Purple Wave is our ultimate option.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, those are always options the city has before. Donated apparatus to some of our sister cities, so there is a method that we can do that.
At least make the inquiry.
Sure.
I'd like to know that, if there are any communities that could use that assistance before we did that.
Sure, most definitely.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Thank you, Chief. Is there any input from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none. With that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk of Open Roll. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Fire Equipment.
My second presentation, then, is for the equipment, actually, that would go on to each one of the apparatus that you just approved to purchase. These are specialized equipment, so basically, we're talking about... Basically, we're talking about hoses, nozzles, ladders, thermal imaging cameras, rescue tools. Those are some of the examples. The project cost that's been set aside from the general obligation bonds is a little over $475,000. So with that, I recommend that you approve the project, adopt the bonding issue, and authorize the necessary signatures. So I'll stand for questions.
So questions of staff? Seeing none. Is there input from the public? Seeing none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion on the item? If there is no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk of Open Roll, members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Fire Station Alerting and Fire Emergency Communications.
And my third and final presentation for today is on station alerting and emergency communications. Currently, the city has twenty-one fire stations in which we provide the station alerting equipment for... If you look at the picture, our alerting systems are used to notify our personnel of incoming emergency calls, and they're in very poor condition. And the functionality of them varies between station and stations. Of course, we have some newer stations, 2009 and later, that have a little bit better equipment, but the majority of our stations, this is kind of the work product that we currently operate under. So we need to make three improvements with our station alerting, the actual station alerting at the stations, what we refer to as our Department of Operations Center, and then a signal booster for the radio system. Improvements would support the improved call response, our emergency operations, and a radio system redundancy, which we currently do not have. The financial consideration is the capital improvement program for a little over $2.9 million in '22, and also the American Rescue Plan Act. So with that, my recommendation is to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'll stand for questions.
There are questions of staff? Is there input from the public? Is there discussion at the bench about the item? There is none, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk of Open Roll, members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Thank you, Chief Snow, for being here and for the presentations. We appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
2022 Sewer Mains for Future Development.
Morning. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The first of three items I have for you this morning is the 2022 Sewer Mains for Future Development Funding. The adopted capital improvement program includes funding for projects to construct new sewer main extensions for currently unserved areas. Projects will primarily serve new development with sewer availability as needed when the city grows. Proposed projects are requested by developers and evaluated by staff to make sure the projects are in the best interest of the utility and the city of Wichita. And effectively, what that means is the area has to be plotted. Staff has to receive a letter of credit and the petitions for improvements within the development itself, and that the proposed extension of sewer main would serve a larger area, meaning that an actual main-sized pipe, if you will, would be necessary. Sometimes, it includes the installation of a lift station, which we are trying to avoid as much as we can these days due to the ongoing operational and maintenance costs. But those items first have to be met, but generally, this is on a first-come, first-served basis. We've spent time with Wawa and the development community over the years, looking at this process. They understand how this works. And generally, what we do is a little bit unique compared to most communities, but it's worked pretty well for us. The adopted CIP includes just over $1.86 million for the extension of sewer mains in 2022. The financial model for extension of these mains effectively returns 50% of the main cost as smaller mains are extended. There's a main benefit fee of 6.2 cents per square foot that is assessed to all properties within the basin over time that will connect to and drain into the sewer main. So it's ratepayers that are paying for the extension of these sewer mains, again, effectively 50% of that cost. One project currently underway is the construction of a sanitary sewer main to serve Schulte-Johnson, second addition. This is near Pawnee and Maze Road. The entire 2022 Sewer Mains for Future Development Funding is requested at this time to increase that project budget. So there had been several questions... So, uh, we, there, there had been several questions asked, so I might clarify. Uh, there are some, uh, developments that, um, happen to be in an area where it takes a considerable extension of the sewer main, uh, increasing the cost. And in this case, this development alone, uh, utilized a portion of the funding in 2021. The first phase is under construction. It's projected to use all of the funding in 2022, and then a small portion in 2023, just to complete this development in multiple phases. Beyond that, uh, we do have, uh, looking then, we, we keep this list, again, a first come, first served. In 2023, the balance of the funding will be utilized, as of right now, for extension of Harbor Isle South Edition. Uh, this would be developed north of K-96 and east of Meridian. And in 2024, we've had a request for extending sewer for development of an area east of Webber Road and south of Pawnee. Approval of the funding today will allow the Schulte-Johnson project to begin the easement acquisition process and complete design work. So the first phase of that project that's underway right now is within the development itself. So the easements were in place by way of plating. Now we need to continue ease to the lift station on Tyler. That's through unplatted property where easement acquisition is necessary, and this will allow us to stay on track for completion of construction at the end of 2023. Uh, and working closely with the developer, and we've done this quite often on these projects, uh, we're actually building this a little bit out of sequence, um, and the developers agreed to temporary pumping until the main commet, connection is completed. So we need to keep moving forward to minimize the costs and the risk associated with temporary pumping. Projects will be funded from either future revenue bonds or sewer utility cash revenues. Uh, if revenue bonds are issued, an additional 8% will be added for financing and administrative costs. Staff recommends city council, adopt the resolution, notice of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Uh, Gary, you ex, you explained that you have a calendar of first come, first served through '23 and even into '24, that they have to wait in line, basically because of the funding. Are there any projects that aren't even on the table because they know that that timeline is so far out? I mean, what is their recourse if someone wanted to do something quicker, but because of the funding, well, calendar that we have, they can't do anything?
Uh, it's possible. I'm not aware right now, uh, based on our communications with the development community, because we try to stay in close contact with them about this. In fact, I met with, uh, Wes Guy and, uh, WABA and some of the, a hand dozen, half a dozen of our larger developers in town, kind of at the onset of COVID, to look at this current process, to see how it was working, uh, to try to look at their long-term projections. Uh, at the time, there was a desire to look at adding funding to this, and that's something that we're still investigating. We've, we've struggled a little bit, uh, to try to develop information relative to looking at what our return on investment is, because again, this program is pretty unique compared to how most communities our size do it. Most communities our size, especially across the Midwest, they put nearly all of the cost on the development itself. So one option is, uh, that the development could take on all this cost. Doesn't matter special assessment. It's not ideal, especially when others are able to use the funding, but we're limited within, uh, the CIP and how this financial model is currently set up. But I'm not aware right now that there's any outliers or that there's any development necessarily being held up. Um, we, this program was put on hold and, uh, through 2015, from about 2010 to 2015, uh, because of the economic downturn. And so there wasn't a lot of development going on then, right? Especially with new phases. Since then, and things have gotten better, uh, with the continued low interest rates and what's happening with the housing market, we've seen more desire to develop in areas where sewer is not available. But I think right now we're keeping up fairly well, uh, based on our recent conversations. We have talked to developers about the option I mentioned. So far, nobody has wanted to do that, but, uh, I think we're in a pretty good place. Most of the, the timing of developments that takes them several years out anyway, this seems to work pretty well.
Okay. Councilmember Sorrello.
Thank you, Mayor. And we've talked about this in private before. Is it, is it correct to say that anybody who buys a property where this future sewer main, where these future mains are, are placed, they will pay their share of the cost, the total cost, of installing that sewer main?
It, it is in general. So there are some properties within the core of the city that were within the 1970 city limits, 1970, sorry, don't want to make that sound like 1917, uh, that are exempt from paying this fee, but, but that's only a few properties. So with all new development, eventually all properties will pay this main benefit fee that, um, proposes to replace half the cost of the extension of these mains. Correct? All properties will pay, eventually pay the fee in all new developments.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? See none. Thank you. Is there any input from the public? There is no input from the public. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and notice of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk Rollup and Roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Funding in agreement for 2021, 2022 biennial bridge inspections.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you again. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The second item I have for you is funding in a, in the agreement with the consultant for 2021, '22 biennial bridge inspections. Federal Highway Administration and Kansas Department of Transportation require the structural inventory and analysis of all bridges maintained by the city of Wichita every other year. In October of 2019, the Staff Screening and Selection Committee interviewed three consultants that responded to the city's request for qualifications for the biennial bridge inspections. In November of 2019, the city council approved an agreement with Benish, who was selected to provide the bridge inspection services for 2019 with the option to renew in 2021. This is something that we've done, uh, for several years now. It helps with consistency in the bridge inspections, uh, to have this run on several cycles, if we're content with the work that the consultant has done for the first round. This is a little bit hard to see, but this is our bridge map. 284 bridges across the city. You can see right in the middle of the map, there's quite a few of them spanning the Wichita Drainage Canal along I-135. West of there is the bridges across the river. Uh, as new, a bridge is defined as a structure that's 20 feet long or more. Uh, as we, areas are annexed into the city, possibly from the county, it is possible that our inventory can grow. Um, and there are also structures I'll talk about in just a moment, uh, that we're going to do with this round of inspections that need to be inspected for safety, are not technically considered a bridge by Federal Highway Department of Transportation because they're less than 20 feet long. Uh, typically, those are within new residential developments, and they still need to be inspected on occasion. Uh, our bridge inspection, uh, what we do with the biennial bridge inspection results in a GIS layer that provides a inspection report for every single bridge within our system, similar to what you see. It provides a rating for each one. It determines if the bridge is structurally deficient, which is the most critical aspect that we look at. Uh, I would mention real quick, amongst our 284 bridges in 2019, less than half a dozen were considered structurally deficient. That does not mean the bridges are in peril. A lot of times that means that they might need to be posted for waiting. Uh, we have a few bridges within our inventory that are considered structurally deficient, and the only reason is, is because of how they were designed compared to current standards, and that we think that they're going to continue to last some time within our system without doing any additional work. What this does for us, uh, as much as anything too, um, obviously, as a matter of public safety, you want to make sure bridges are traversable, and there's no issues for those that are using them. Uh, one of the results we get out of this biennial bridge inspection by hiring a consultant is a detailed maintenance plan for our maintenance division to follow. And I think that's been one of the biggest benefits for us for a lot of years, and why our bridge system is in such good shape, uh, is we've been able to follow that recommended maintenance plan, uh, every two years leading up to the next inspection. Benish demonstrated an adept approach to the project with expertise in bridge inspections, and assigned appropriate staff to complete tasks and reports in a timely manner. Staff recommends selecting the option to renew their contract in 2021, and we will include inspection of the retaining T-Wall sections along the downtown Central Rail Corridor, which is required by legal settlement, as well as inspection of 39 city-owned pedestrian bridges, which is one thing I did not mention earlier, uh, but is important for us to inspect on a regular basis. Cost of the bridge inspections is $232,500. The CIP includes $250,000 in funding for 2021 bridge inspections. Uh, the additional funding, uh, this time would be for inspection and staff oversight. Staff recommends city council approve the budget, approve the agreement, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
So questions of staff? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Gary. Um, this one was an option to renew for '21 based off the original '19 contract.
Correct.
Will this renewal also have an option to renew in '23, or will it go back out to bid?
It will go back out for proposal at that time. Uh, I can tell you, when I first started working in design, we had, um, had the same consultant that done the inspections five or six cycles, and, and that wasn't because of a renewal. We would go through a process and, and seem to continue to hire the same one, and that's fine. But we have found, uh, throughout the industry, talking with others, KDOT in particular, that there comes a time when you need a fresh set of eyes. It makes a really big difference, uh, because of the same people, the same staff. It's, I think it's easy to get complacent and maybe miss something. Not that we had any issues in that way, but we have purposely made this the option for one renewal only. And so certainly after this, we will go back out with the proposal to hire consultant. And, and I just might add, uh, the people who just did it are not eligible for that next one. So they have to take a break, if that makes sense.
Further questions of staff? See none. Is there any input from the public? See none. Is there discussion at the bench on the item? If there is no discussion at the bench, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget and agreement, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk Rollup and Roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Funding and administrative change order number one for improvements to West Street, Harry to Pawnee.
Last item I have for you this morning, uh, is a administrative change order and the balance of design funding for improvements to West Street at Harry Pawnee and K-42. Uh, just as a quick reminder, this is a project that we've looked at with the city council numerous times, and I'll give you some background in just a moment. Uh, just to the left of the red area, which you see is the project, uh, itself is 235. K-42 is running from bottom left to upper right, middle right of the screen. This is a significant project, uh, that is included in transportation improvement plan for WAMP over federal funding, and we're currently looking to request additional federal funding, as a side note, because of the size of the project. In April of 2018, the city council approved funding for a design concept for the project. In February of 2020, city council approved funding for supplemental design agreement number one, which was for additional traffic modeling, so we could get to a point of developing a final concept. In November of 2020, the district advisory board unanimously approved the co, the proposed design concept. In December of last year, city council approved, uh, that same design concept, supplemental design agreement number two, for a portion of the final design and the available 2021 budget. So just to reiterate what I just said there real quick, the purpose of this item is a little bit unique to what we've done in the past. This is a larger project, which has a larger design fee with it. Uh, the complexity of the project and the size, uh, requires that amount of detail. In 2020, uh, the only available budget we had was just for a portion of the design. So the city council effectively approved the design concept, uh, the design contract, but only a portion of the funding. And what this action will do today is approve the 2021 funding and be able to finalize that design. Uh, just to show you again real quick what this project looks like, uh, this again is the intersection of Pawnee, K-42, and West Street. I won't go into the details again about this, uh, concept that we looked at in the past, but wanted to show you again. This is the same look, uh, tip to the right. So the north being to the right shows that we're also making improvements to West Street itself, from Harry all the way south to south of Pawnee. Just to say the same thing again, supplemental design agreement number two is approved. Funding was only available for a portion of the proposed scope of work. This administrative change order number one is necessary to amend that supplemental design agreement, allowing the contract amount to be adjusted to the full amount with the approval of additional funding. The design fee to date, uh, is just over $730,000. Staff recommends approving the remaining balance of the design agreement, which is just over $492,000, which will bring the total of design fee to $1,200, almost $25,000. The existing budget of $765,000 was approved by the city council in December of 2020. Funding for this project has changed from general obligation to local sales tax in the, it was changed in the previous CIP. Staff recommends initiating $1.7 million, which is currently available in the adopted CIP, which will be for the remaining balance of the design contract, which was approved in supplemental design agreement number two. That will be for right-of-way acquisition, completing the design, and staff time. Currently, the federal funding for this project is first available in 2023. We have to be to a point of, of completing design and bidding the project so we can obligate those funds in 2023. This will bring the total revised budget to $2,465,000. I apologize. I know that was a lot of numbers in one spot. The, staff recommends city council approve the revised budget, administrative change order number one, adopt the amending resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Input from the public? See none. Discussion will come back to the bench. Is there discussion on the item? If there is no discussion on the item, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the revised budget and administrative change order number one, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk Rollup and Roll. Members cast the vote. Oh, it looks like we got someone on the board. Uh, Councilmember Bubak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. Shout out to staff. Um, we've been working on this for years. Definitely appreciate everything you guys have done in this. We've looked at numerous designs, and I think we've finally got it. So I appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you.
Members cast the vote. Having received seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
2021 Wichita River Festival Resolution, gating A Price Woodard Park and the lawn adjacent to the Hyatt Regency Wichita.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of Wichita City Council. Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager. Uh, per the city code, the city council may approve the gating of public spaces for activities that cause a major impact, impact to the use of a city park or activities that charge admission for use of a park. Wichita Festivals Incorporated has requested permission to fence and charge admission for 2021 Fall River Fest events. Uh, the areas that we're, uh, discussing gating are A Price Woodard Park, as well as the lawn adjacent to the Hyatt Regency Wichita, um, hotel. Uh, the gating is requested for the Fall Wichita River Fest, which will occur September 30th through October 3rd. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution to allow Wichita Festivals Incorporated to gate A Price Woodard Park and the lawn adjacent to the Hyatt Regency Wichita for the 2021 Fall River Festival. I'm available for questions.
There are questions of staff? Is there input from the public? See none. Is there a discussion on this item? As this item resides in District 1, the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I would move that the city council adopt the resolution to allow Wichita Festivals Inc. to gate A Price Woodard Park and the lawn adjacent to the Hyatt Regency Wichita for the 2021 River, uh, Wichita River Festival.
I'll second the motion. Clerk Rollup and Roll. Three spots of seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Community Events, Wichita River Festival.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager. Um, since 1972, Wichita Festivals Incorporated has coordinated and produced the Wichita River Fest. In 2021, Wichita Festivals Incorporated- Wichita Festivals Incorporated planned nine days of River Fest activities divided into two weekends. Summer River Fest was held June 4th through the 6th, and included participatory events, including the Fidelity Bank River Run, a River Fest triathlon, softball tournaments, a paddleboard 5K, and other river races. Fall River Fest, which we discussed in the item prior to this, will be held September 30th through October 3rd, and will feature concerts, fireworks, activities, and the sundown parade. Due to COVID, some planned events, such as Kid Corner, that traditionally appear at River Fest, have been canceled, and other events have been modified in light of COVID, namely, the parade will be a reverse parade. In March of 2020, excuse me, March of 2020, the city entered a MOU with Wichita Festivals Incorporated that provided up to $80,000 in annual funding for River Fest or Wichita Festivals Incorporated events. $40,000 was provided to support the Summer River Fest. Wichita Festivals has requested the city provide $40,000 in funding for the Fall River Fest. Once again, the funding amounts are budgeted in the Tourism and Convention Fund, authorized by the MOU that city council approved in March of 2020. Wichita Festivals continues to work closely with city staff on licensing and street closure requests. In lieu of issuing individual requests, staff has developed a comprehensive licensing report that authorized necessary permits, licenses, and street closures. Staff's recommended action is to approve the licensing report, street closures, and requests for permits pursuant to the MOU between the city of Wichita and Wichita Festivals Incorporated. I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Any questions of staff? See, none. Is there input from the public? See, none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion on the item? Chair recognizes Councilmember Claycombe as this item resides in District 6.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we take staff recommendation, approve the licensing report, street closures, and request for permit for the Wichita River Festival per the MOU between the city and Wichita Festivals, Inc.
I'll second the motion. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Resulting in seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk? Oh, thank you, Dante.
2021 IT data cable replacement.
Morning, sir. Welcome.
Morning. Morning, Mayor Whipple, members of the city council. I'm Kevin Norman of your IT department. For your consideration today is a CIP-funded project for replacement of cable and backbone components and support systems as defined within the IT, within the project. This project upgrades cable to current standards. The recommended action is to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'll stand for any questions.
Still questions of staff? See, none. Thank you. Is there any input from the public? See, none. Is there more discussion on this item from the bench? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments?
Let's start off with appointments. Are there members who wish to make an appointment? Councilmember Fry?
Thank you. I need to appoint Marv Schellenberg to the Land Bank Board of Trustees.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Dr. Valencia K. Monk Morgan to the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees, and Jolanda D. Hamilton to the Wichita Employees Retirement System Board.
Councilmember Blubog?
I want to appoint Jerome Castillo to the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees.
Further appointments? I will appoint Sir Bob, Sir Bohan Corrier to the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees. Is there any other appointments at this time? If there is none, I'll make a motion to accept all appointments.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Seven yea votes, that motion does pass. We are back on announcements. Is there any announcements for the good of the group or for the public? Councilmember Blubog?
Wanted to honor Roger Zell, police ID C-0528. He died in his home on 9/1 under the care of hospice with heart and lung issues. He was a Wichita police officer for 17 years from 4/17, 1957, to 10/4, 1974. He was a narcotics detective. Actually, I remember he was, he was shot in the line of duty as a Wichita police officer, made a full recovery. He left for the DEA and served a career there in the Narcotics Division. After retirement of DEA, he worked in adult probation in Sedgwick County for several years, and Roger is the husband of Carol Zell and stepfather of current WBD Detective Chris Barati. Please keep the family in your thoughts and prayers.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just ask that everybody keep the victims of last night's shooting in their prayers today. One young person did lose their life, and several more were injured.
Further announcements? See no further announcements. With that, I will make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass, and we are adjourned.